Okay, calling the meeting to order. And I'm going to read the right to know checklist. As Chair of the Sanborn Regional School Board, I find that due to the state of the emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Sanborn Regional School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-558-8656, Meeting ID 971-6989-5077, or by clicking on a website address which is provided on the SAU17.org or .net website. That address is www.youtube.com/c/srsdmeetingvideos. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Sanborn Regional School District at www.sau17.net. C) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 978-482-7394, or email at helpdesk@SAU17.net. D) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. And I just want to announce that this is a joint meeting between the Sanborn School District and the Fremont School District. So, starting in over order of the people appearing on my screen, Dawn. You're muted, Dawn.
There we go, okay, sorry. Dawn Dutton, I am in my home and there is no one in the room with me.
Emily?
Emily Phillips, I am home alone by myself.
Sue? Sue Perry?
Oh Penny, I'm sorry, I'm in my office and Alan is next door.
Tammy?
Tammy Mahoney, I'm in my home, I'm alone in a room.
We can barely hear you, I can hardly hear you, Tammy.
Hey, I'm here.
Okay.
Pete?
Computer audio, as usual.
Pete, you're muted. Go ahead, Pete.
Okay, yeah, I'm in my office, so Pete Broderick, I'm in my office, in the house, nobody's in the room with me.
Amy?
Yeah, mute Amy.
Yeah, everybody's...
It took me a second to unmute, I apologize. Amy Leslie, I'm in the room by myself at my house.
Okay, and everybody's jumping around now, so Sharon?
Hi, I'm Sharon Vincent and I'm in a room by myself as well.
And Brittany?
Hi, I'm Brittany Thompson and I am in my car by myself.
Okay, Dawn, I don't think I called on you, did I?
Yes, first.
Oh, first, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Jim Baker, and I'm in a room in my home by myself.
Larry.
Larry.
Oh Larry, sorry Larry.
Yeah, I'm Larry Heath, I'm in my home, in my shop, and I'm by myself.
And me.
Greg?
I'm in my car and I'm by myself.
And I don't see Gordon.
Gordon just went.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is great phrase, "I am in my home office by myself."
All right.
Matt, you gotta do Matt.
Well, do I just need to do the board members or everybody?
Everybody.
Okay, Matt?
I'm Matt Angel and I'm in my home office, there's no one here with me.
Okay, Ellen?
She'll be next.
I'm Alan Hutton, I'm in my school office and I'm all alone.
Hey Brian?
I'm Brian Stack, I'm the principal of the high school, I am alone in a room in my house.
Tom?
Tom Ambrose, Superintendent of Schools, I'm at my home office alone, my family's upstairs, and I'm organically loud, so they may hear me say something, but I have the earbuds in, so.
Jim Baker, and I guess I said I did that already, so we're all set. Did I miss anybody? Okay, thank you. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance... Well, we, I would assume that by everybody logging in, we already did the roll call. So, school reopening plans, or everybody announcing who they were and where they're located. We did the roll call, so school reopening plans, Tom, do you want to pick that off?
Sure, we're doing great, we've had two full days of school in person and synchronous, and we have, Brian's going to give a lot longer update about school and high school during the meeting here, but I would just say that, you know, we are working on the drop-off and pickup situation. We had to stagger some things because it was just getting way too long. Our families have been absolutely fantastic about driving kids to school, which has limited the bus ridership, but conversely caused a bottleneck for drop-offs and pickups at all the schools. And I just wanted to publicly thank our four administrators, Brian Stack, Christine DeRocheur, Ryan McCluskey, and Chris Snyder. I got a call from the Newton Chief of Police this afternoon, and he said, hey, I just thought you could use some good news. Memorial School completely fixed their pickup at the end of the day, and instead of having people lined up all the way past Osseos over the train tracks, it ran super smooth. And so, Mr. Snyder did the same, and Mr. Stack, you could speak to it at the end of the day at your building. But I just wanted everyone to know that I've been to all the classrooms in the district, went around two days in a row, and I was really, really impressed by how our staff and students have been handling themselves, and they've just done an absolutely fantastic job. Thank you to our teachers who have worked tirelessly to prepare for this, social distancing, handling the kids with regard to masks, and the opening of the school, they've done a great job.
Superintendent Hutton?
Thank you. Fremont opened school for students on Wednesday, September 9th. At that time, we gave families an option to return in person or to choose remote instruction. And at that time, about 75% of our families chose to have their students return to in-person learning at Ellis School. So, we started on Wednesday, September 9th with several safety precautions in place. I'm sure as everyone's doing, there's temperature and health checks before the students arrive at school. Face covering is required of all students unless they are medically excused. Social distancing has been done throughout the building, keeping students four to six feet apart within the classroom. We did have to purchase additional desks to make that happen, because like most schools, we had moved to tables and group activities, and we're now back to desk and chairs. Like Tom Superintendent Ambrose mentioned, parents have been wonderful in assisting. We have, after almost two months, we have the drop-off and pickup down to a science, and it's working very well. It does take time, so hang in there, the first few days are tough. Students do remain with their cohorts, and we have a very succinct method of contact tracing. So, when and if there are cases, we are able to report exactly who has been in touch with who. Early on, when the weather was nice, we really encouraged students in classes to go outside to learn, and it was a joy to see them socially distanced even outside and learning. In Ellis, in Fremont, we gave them a six-week time slot, which means after six weeks, families were allowed to say, okay, I have tried remote learning, or I've tried in-person learning, and I now would like why. So, at the mid-October timeframe, we did a second survey of parents, and at that time, we had 84% of our students then returning to the building. So, we feel as though it has been a successful start. I need to say, school is not the way school used to be, and while everyone's working very hard to make it work, I do think there is, both staff and students wish it could be the way it used to be. So, we're just encouraging people to hang in there, to be vigilant, because, you know, our staff's going on two months of this now, and it's, we can feel the fatigue setting in, but it's important that we maintain our social distancing, maintain our hand washing, maintain our face coverings to the greatest extent possible, and keep everyone safe. So, as Superintendent Ambrose mentioned, the staff, the administration have done an amazing job, and parents, both by transporting students and by providing lunch to students, have allowed us to open and be successful, so we appreciate all of that support.
Okay, well, thank you. Jamie Fitzpatrick has just joined us. Jamie, can you unmute and announce yourself and where you are, whether you're alone or not?
Yeah, I'm at home in my office, I'm alone, and the meeting is Tuesday, not Wednesday.
It's still Tuesday, Jamie, you're okay.
I just wanted to shake us up a little, Jamie.
Jeez, sorry about that.
All right. Okay, Matt, capital costs and tuition estimate?
Right, per Section 7 of the 2003 Agreement with Fremont and Sanborn Regional School District, those numbers are going to be available on November 1st. That happens to fall on a Sunday, so I'm going to be delivering it to the school district on Monday.
I was hoping for Friday, Matt. No, okay, we'll afford to receiving that Monday. The only thing I would share about that is I know we had a conversation last year about capital cost and how portion of the building was now being used for middle school expenses. So, Fremont would hope that the capital cost would remain constant, because the middle school is still using that portion of the building as they were last year. And I know it's, I can relate to Matt and Tom's challenge in building a budget as we are. I just need to be presented to our board Monday night, so the sooner you can get me that on Monday, the better off I'll be, Matt. So, we are presenting that to the board, and we are, in this scenario that we're in now, it's important that we build a budget that can support learning whether students are remote or in school, whether we're in the current situation or in a different situation. So, it's very challenging to consider all the moving variables as we prepare the budget. But our goal, and I will share this with you so that you can keep this in mind, is to bring in as flat of a budget as we possibly can, because taxpayers are challenged at this time. We'll do our best, but we can only do so much.
Course offerings for 2021, Brian?
Might help if I unmute, thank you. All right, so I was going to talk to everybody a little bit about some of the offerings and changes that we have to our academic programs this year. If there are other questions about COVID and how we're responding to that, we can also address, we can address that whenever you would like, but let's talk a little bit about some of those new courses. So, our program of studies, as you know, that's a process that goes all year. It starts about this time of the year, actually. We start working with our staff and our students to put together some new course ideas and new program ideas. We roll out a program of studies sometime in January, and give students a couple of months to make selections and choices. That's a process that you with counselors. When we get into late February, early March, we make some decisions based on student input and student interest on which courses we're going to attempt to run in our schedule and which ones we're not. And then we have to ultimately make our staffing decisions before the beginning of April based on that. And then from there, schedule, we start fitting kids into their classes, and then we give them their schedule, by summertime, they're allowed to make changes. We start the year, they make a few more changes, and then guess what? We start the process again, so it really is a year-long process. We're always looking to do better and always looking to try to meet kids' needs. So, some of the courses that we're running this school year that are new from the previous school year, we received a $10,000 grant this year from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, and that was geared towards advanced manufacturing and looking at ways that we could increase the number of students that look at that career field. And so, what we've done is we've created a couple of courses with our shop teachers called Survey of Vocational Careers and Introduction of Vocational and Technical Learning. So, these are half-credit classes that go together, and they give kids some advanced certification in OSHA and blueprint reading and some other general skills that would help them in this area. Going to add an option for kids to take some college credits through the New Hampshire Community College system. So, we've been working with them, and that'll be a year two piece. We also have a class that we run every four years. It's Sanborn, very successful class, it's been running for as long as I've been in the building, and a few cycles before that, it's called Elections and Civic Engagement. So, that course is back again, it follows the presidential election, and students get an opportunity to actually role-play the candidates and go through some debates. And we hold a big town hall rally for students, and it ultimately ends in a vote. Kids, all the kids in the school will vote, and then the class kind of switches gears and does civic engagement topics for the rest of the year. So, despite COVID, we will be running that big event for students in a virtual format, and that actually happens this Friday. So, we're looking forward to that. We have a couple other half-credit classes in our, one of our mathematics teachers. Last year, we were looking for ways to add some more project-based experiences in the science, technology, engineering, and math field. So, we started a two-course sequence in aviation. And last year, and again, we got approved for some funds and a program through a national foundation, the AOPA. And so, last year, we ran the introductory course. This year is an Intro to Flight and Intro to Aircraft Systems course. So, the students get just a taste of what those fields look like. There's obviously a lot of different careers in aviation that you can do, not just flying planes, although flying planes is pretty cool, too. We've had a lot of great community partners help us with that particular program, and it's nice to see something hands-on that's unique for our area. There are not any other schools around here offering it, with the exception of Winnicott, Winnicott has a small program, and then Manchester Schools would be the next closest stop to find one. We brought back our Foods and Nutrition Program. That took a hiatus for a couple of years when our teacher retired, but we're excited to be able to restart that with one of our health teachers, and there are a few sections of that course. It's not new, it's new this year, but it is an existing course that we brought back. We have a couple of electives that just, we didn't quite have enough students to run it. They were social studies electives, they were in the program of studies. They were, they centered around classic culture, roots of democracy, civil liberties and civil rights and social movements. We just, you know, this happens every year, we don't always, we're not able to run all of the classes, and, you know, we'll go back and retool and see if there's a better way that we could offer that next year, maybe in a more broader sense, to appeal to a wider audience. But the last thing I'll say about programs, perhaps our biggest increase, and this has been the case for several years, has been in our ELO, our Extended Learning Opportunity Program. So, we have the ability for students to earn credits for learning that occurs outside of the classroom. And that could mean different things. It could mean students that are doing an independent project with another teacher or a community member outside, or otherwise. It could be an internship or some other kind of experience that a student is doing. It almost always involves a community partner. It could be for any length of time, so we have some kids who just earn a partial credit or one credit. We have some students that are earning three or more credits. It really just depends on the circumstances. We have grown to about 125 students taking ELOs, which is phenomenal from where we were six or seven years ago, having half a dozen. The obvious advantage with an ELO is students are able to design their own program, and they get it to be exactly what they want it to be. So, rather than taking courses that they may or may not see as helpful to them, they get a program that is, they're highly motivated to be successful in. In the last few years, we've taken one of our business technology teachers, and she's got a new title because she works during the summertime on this. So, she is the Career Pathways Coordinator, and having her in this role has really helped us raise the rigor for a lot of these extended learning opportunities. So, she will work with any of the community partners who sign on to work with our students to help build a learning program for that student that'll be rigorous and meet their needs. So, I don't know if you folks have questions about that, but that's a little bit on what we have for new programs at the high school.
I had a question about the ELO, as far as you may have touched on at the end. When the students come forward and want to do it, if they, you have a list of community partners that they can choose from, or let's say you don't have a community partner on there that, but they're interested in doing task A, but you don't have someone, do you guys help them find someone, or is that to them to find them?
It's a little bit of everything, so we're always looking for people, and we're always keeping a list. So, there may be a year that we don't have someone who wants to do upholstery, for example. But if there is one in a future year, I know someone who can do upholstery. Dawn's smiling over there. But no, because sometimes we get some really unique ones, and sometimes the request comes in before we have the student. So, I got an email two days ago from someone saying there's an opportunity for a student who may want to work for NASA doing an ELO, emailed me back, so I quickly said, absolutely, not even knowing if we had a student, because I'd love to see what that may look like. And it ended up being, working at the center up in Concord on a project that's connected with NASA, but still, that could be a cool fit for one of our kids. ELOs happen all times during the year, so we have students signing on. Of course, a lot of them in the fall, but we could have students signing on to start an ELO at any point in the year, or over the summer.
That's cool, sorry.
Thank you, Brian, very helpful.
I had a question about the middle school. What were some of the biggest lessons learned from last year that you guys are applying? That you learned last year in the middle school that you're applying this year?
For the, Greg, do you mean for having the middle school in the building?
Yeah, I mean, the building in terms of, and how, it's really around the high school, like what's, what are different ways you're working with the middle school in the same building, the high school to...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
...streamline that, that's really what I'm looking at.
Oh, sure, so, yeah, some of you may remember, it's not the first time that the middle school has been in high school. So, oh gosh, five or six years ago, the middle school spent about a calendar year in the building due to a roof issue, but that was eighth grade and it was temporary. So, that was really completely different. I'm not sure that we really, there isn't a lot that we carried over from that experience other than just learning how to live with another school sharing space, and that's probably the biggest thing. I mean, obviously, the most important thing was, we had to make sure, one, can we all fit without having to reduce or change any of our programs at the high school? And the answer was, yes, we can. So, you know, identifying the right appropriate space for the middle school so that they can have as much of their own personal experience as possible in a building that you can't completely separate two schools in, which is true. So, the middle school operates out of about one and a half classroom wings for the high school. The high school occupies most of the rest of the building. And then, we share some common facilities like the gyms and the library and the caf and the auditorium. And we, our schedules are pretty much separate, except for the last part of the day after lunch. Our schedules are aligned so that middle school students can take their unified arts classes, because we do share middle school, and we do share some staff, which is not a new thing. We've always shared some middle and high school staff. However, I will say, it's not, it's not all the high school sharing and giving. So, I mentioned that we brought the Foods and Nutrition Program back. Well, the reason that that was able to happen was because by having the middle school at the high school, and now having the middle school health teacher position at the high school campus, because we were allowed to do some additional sharing, because we didn't have the travel time piece there, that's what allowed us to free up some teaching positions to bring back a program like that. So, I work really closely with the middle school principal. We do some things together if they're campus-specific. We do a lot of things completely separate, because we do want the kids to have their own experience. And I would venture to guess, although it's a little different with COVID, but I would venture to guess, most high school students will tell you after a while, they don't really notice that the middle school is there, and that was true the last time, too. The job trying to keep them separate as much as we could, you know?
That's great to see that you're able to make both schools benefit by that merger. You know, you're sharing resources, bumping out, that's great.
That's, that's, we always look for opportunities, right? If we stay focused on trying to do what's best for kids and take advantage of every opportunity that we can, so we can maximize our resources, that's always going to be a win in my game.
Yep, cool.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Brian.
Welcome, thanks.
So, Fremont High School Search Committee updates.
That would be neat, although Emily, who is on that committee, may also have something to say. When we started doing our search, I think I may have shared with you a year ago, the decision was made to look at area schools and try to determine what would be the most appropriate school for placement of Fremont students when our contract with Sanborn expires. At the time that we started looking and doing our visits last fall, people thought we were way ahead of the game, and, you know, the contract doesn't expire until 2026, and why are we looking now, et cetera, et cetera? Well, we didn't have a crystal ball, but suddenly, things got put on pause. Thank goodness, we were able to do all six site visits before March, when things changed dramatically for all of us. So, we were able to do those six visits, but everything else kind of hit the pause button. So, let me tell you what the next steps are and where we are now. Following those six visits, the high school study committee now needs to come back together. They are preparing for a presentation to the school board and the public about what we learned from our visits to those six schools. We will give highlights of what we learned and what we thought were the advantages of each of those and challenges at each of the six schools that we faced. We will be sharing that with the school board this fall, I don't have an exact... We will be sharing that with the school board this fall. I don't have an exact date for you. The committee is coming back together in early November. And again, they were supposed to do this work in March and April, so we're, we've lost a good six or seven months here. But we're going to pick that back up and make our presentation to the board. What we will be doing at that time is, as I said, sharing the highlights. But also I anticipate that the committee will be making some recommendations. Our goal would be to reduce the number of possible high schools from six to probably three. And we would ask the school board to take input from the administration and perhaps the public. And then make that decision probably late fall, late two thousand and twenty. The challenge will then be to dig deeper into whether it's two or three schools that they select. As what I call the finalists, to dig a little deeper in those to perhaps. Depending on what the situation is, maybe do a virtual visit, have some follow-up questions. With administration, teachers and students to learn more about those. And we would like to be able to move forward and hopefully. By the end of this school year, if not next fall, be able to make our decision. That is a timeframe that's only in my head at this point because the school board needs to make a decision about. Exactly what they want us to do once we've narrowed the number of schools down. We do know that our decision has a direct effect on San Bern. Because if our students are not there, we certainly understand that's something you need to know as soon as you possibly can. We understand that need. I'm glad that we started as early as we did because we do have important information to share. And I believe we will be able to move forward and make that decision. I would say in the next twelve months, but I can't give you anything more specific than that right now without the board's weighing in on. On what they hear from us. And Emily Phillips is on here. She's a member of the committee. I don't know if you have anything else you'd like to share, Emily.
Alan, you said it perfectly. I mean, we were told by many of the schools that we were premature and reaching out. A lot of them were confusing our timeline with. Needing to place our students this fall. So I mean, then COVID hit and everything kind of stopped. So I'm glad we got to visit all six. Schools because at least we have that information. I do feel that we may need to go back and visit. Sites again, or like you said, do follow-up questions because either administration has changed or even how everyone's handling COVID and and who knows how long this is going to last. But I feel good. I think we're gonna reconvene with the original. Committee, which includes parents and community members and some administrative staff and myself. And we're gonna, you know, present it to the school board. I think we're in a good spot and we should, I think we should hit that timeline of. Having more of a definitive direction within the next twelve months, for sure. So thank you, Alan.
Any any questions specifically regarding that? That we can answer, obviously. We're still working on it and we do understand the urgency for you. There's an urgency on our end too because it it continues to come up each and every time we build a budget. So. That's where we're at.
I assume you'll keep our superintendent updated with breaking news?
I will. I will. He's on my speed dial.
She does. We we've talked and. You know, we understand the timeline and we also recognize, and I do appreciate, I just wanted to thank the Fremont Board for recognizing that. I know it seems far away, but. Transitioning, should the Fremont Board choose to move their students to another district, that transition does have. A significant program programmatic effect on our staff. It's a third of our high school students. So we need to know so that we can plan our facilities accordingly. And and begin any transitional processes that we need to start should you choose another district. But I'm not really worried about that because, you know. We'll we'll continue to woo you with good vibes and. Reasonable budgets. So hopefully the two things combined will help, but we certainly recognize that. You know, you need to do a thorough process and and anything that we could do to support you, please feel free to reach out to me at any time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ryan. Ryan.
I don't know if I was allowed to speak or not, but I would just also add to. You know, I look through the lens of what the students will need. We go through this process. So again, from my perspective. The decision is, I mean, you you guys have to make the decision that's best for you. I spent six years on the school board myself. In Timberlane, I completely get how that angle works. But I want you to know that we will be hyper-focused on making sure if the choice is not San Bern. That all of the Fremont students that we serve in San Bern have the experience that they need to have to finish out. Their time at San Bern and transition to whatever else that looks like, right? I mean, we've, over the last twenty years. Have, in my mind, have become a pretty close school community that includes three towns that share a lot of things. With the kids. The kids are are one community. So that's certainly an important piece that we'll want to. Unpack with everybody so that we can do it appropriately for the kids.
Thank you, Ryan.
Any other comments or questions?
I had a question about budget this year. Maybe you guys haven't haven't done it yet. But have you guys presented your budget goals as a board to the administration on what you guys are looking for for next year's budget?
We're we're not sharing anything about the budget until November fourth. It'll be presented that evening.
Even the evening goals that you guys had or anything? Okay.
No, our our goal is obviously to. Reduce, I mean, you can look at the minutes from last year that that we're trying to reduce our cost per pupil. Which has a direct impact to you. And our, I will say that our reorganization has been incredibly effective. Probably more so than even I thought in the initial analysis. And so we are very optimistic that we will continue to reduce our cost per pupil. While offering an even better program than what we had before, which is pretty exciting. So I I I don't want to talk about it too much right now, but I do invite you all to tune in. The the meeting next Wednesday will be. YouTube available so you can watch it. And I would encourage all of the Fremont Fremont Board members to watch it because. It is a very important meeting this year.
And so about your meetings, you guys record them, you share them with our local town FCTV. So they're very widely watched. So thank you guys for sharing those on a timely manner. They're they're very popular amongst the community. So thank you.
Transparency and trust have been my two biggest goals since I came on board. Letting people know what's going on, having them involved. So thanks, Greg. We're happy to do that.
Yep, no, it's been awesome. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Greg, for the question and thank you, Tom, for your response. Okay, anybody else have anything related? Okay. The next San Bern Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the Budget Committee on Wednesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty. At six P M. In the gymnasium at San Bern Regional High School. So not the auditorium, but the gymnasium. So if that's it, I'll adjourn the meeting.